Yeah, I watched.
Yeah.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah.
Football's been a big disappointment.
I just turned it off. Did you hear what he said?
We're live now on the.
Yeah. You can't leave to Missouri by. Which is basically.
Yeah.
From my wife.
All right.
Get your cars right now. Maybe time to sell.
You need a new car.
No, this is this is super sick.
Our steering wheel. Fix the chair.
Is like the whole.
At least it's in me.
So what how many miles?
This one's fine.
I don't know. Can it be fixed, man? Just. Oh, look, that's a whole. Came off of it.
That's weird.
Our trees.
So.
Either that or.
Oh. That one, yeah. Yeah, new guy gets the old chair for sure.
I should get a little bit of sun.
That's it.
Very nice.
So good.
Try not to get too much. What the hell are you doing? How are you doing?
Yeah, I'm out there essentially down.
How are you?
Come on. Trying to hang in there.
Did you? That did.
The city's ready.
Luck of the draw.
So you go to the.
Yeah, we did. That's short. Nice turn out. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Got anything? Yeah, there were no.
So.
The islands.
That you hadn't been here before.
Grenado is the one that everyone.
What's that?
Really?
It'll be fast.
Yes.
Not really overly popular.
Yeah.
Well, I'm hoping the committee first reading. If it typically goes to committee, we can go ahead and get some reading. We'll see.
Think. Waterloo is one of the points. A lot of swans. And it's kind of bad.
Yeah.
They see.
See.
Too many. We've got. But you have the Swiss from Chicago.
How'd the other go?
We did a bird sanctuary.
How was that there? First one, yeah.
So. Pretty good. We didn't get our song.
I want to find out what they've got to support there. Work with interference, but she's going to, right?
I think she had fifteen more pages. Before.
So I failed to print a copy in your packets. That's why you got that. This changed only. Same substance, but the language cleaned up slightly from what was distributed. I'm going to police court. I just got.
Actually thought that.
Well, that's good.
The picture, yeah, I didn't come to the presentation. I couldn't. But I thought what they presented to us was pretty basic.
Yeah, I mean, according to them, they're pretty much trying to mirror the the brick style of the Kroger.
And what I liked was they were providing us the information we needed as opposed to Gustavo's that didn't provide us anything.
About the roof line? Well, I I think you're right. I think they have to shield, you know, they have to build some sort of shielding for any AC units and that sort of stuff. It's a skirt.
Which they should, which they should do. That's that's that's.
I don't I don't think so.
Kroger's got a flat roof. It just looks like it's not flat on the front.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. They have a dumpster on it. They had one. One of them I have does have it on there, though. It was on the corner. It was on that corner.
But this is the one Chris says has to get said first.
Correct, yeah. It's the one.
First area. I haven't had a chance to study. The guy who wrote to us about his fish poem. And he's not going to be here. That's all right.
He had a birthday party.
Yeah, and to me.
He wrote me just a few minutes ago.
Yeah, but if they're gonna, if he wants us to make some change, he needs to come and talk to us.
I agree.
And I'm I'm not opposed to making some change, but I didn't understand whether it was in this room or whether it's something else. We don't say anything about.
Yeah.
It's in there.
Yeah, it is. It's underwater features. Okay, so we're I had to check my email. Figure out who's on.
No, Sarah. She's coming. Yeah.
Is it under the definition of attractive nuisance? She's cutting a close up about unfenced swimming pools.
Last minute kind of a person.
Because I referenced where.
Yep.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
That's not good.
Yeah. Yeah, that's not good. Sarah's tardy.
Yeah.
Seven o'clock. We're waiting for one council member. Give her a minute or two. Right on time. Seven o'clock.
Here she is. No, no.
Yeah.
I still remember. You know, I always spent like seven months.
Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order the Monday, November twenty, twenty twenty-three. City Council regular meeting of the city of Prospect, Kentucky. We're the first item on the agenda is the dedication of the mayor Todd Everly conference room. Mayor, we're glad to see you here. Harriet, glad you're here. So Prospect elected Todd as its mayor in two thousand and six and reelected him in twenty ten. Before becoming mayor, Todd had a distinguished career as a lawyer. He earned his bachelor's degree in nineteen sixty-eight. In nineteen seventy-two, Todd received his law degree from Vanderbilt University School of Law. His career included notable work in in legal aid in Tennessee and in Illinois. It also included in nineteen seventy-nine to two thousand, the field of continuing legal education. First in Illinois and then at the University of Kentucky. From nineteen eighty-six to two thousand, Todd served as the associate dean and director of continuing legal education at the University of Kentucky College of Law. During his four years as mayor from. Excuse me, during his years as mayor, two thousand and seven to two thousand and thirteen, Todd received the Kentucky League of Cities elect Kentucky elected city official of the year award in the year twenty eleven. That same year, the Jefferson County League of Cities gave its top award to Mayor. To Mayor Everly. I've asked some folks to to make some remarks as we, and so that everyone knows, we're dedicating this conference room, the mayor's conference room, to honor Mayor Everly. So Jeff, if you would.
First of all, back in twenty twelve, I guess it was in January. They had an interview panel that they put together and Todd ran the panel. And John was on it, Loretta Erdel and Anne Sims. And they put you through an entire gauntlet of questions or whatever. And they even brought me back a second time. But one thing that really impressed me was the amount of detail that they really put all of the candidates through. And it was it was great to see how serious they took the entire process. And it was obvious then, and it was when I later was selected. How serious he took the position of mayor and that he really wanted the police department to do well and the entire city to do well. He just took the job at heart and he was fantastic to work with. He's just a quality individual. I love working with him, love working for him, and I just enjoyed it thoroughly. And we still keep up together via email over U of L. We're both diehard U of L fans. And then occasionally he'll send me a an email and then I'll get on my little soapbox. And before you know it, I've piked for forty-five minutes. And his responses are like three sentences, but I go on for like a day and a half, it seems like. But but I truly do enjoy those and I really enjoyed working with Todd. I consider him a great friend and he was a wonderful mayor and we were very fortunate to have him.
Thanks, chief. Appreciate that. Lee Tucey?
I'm going to say a little about forestation. Might have been a surprise. Tonight on the agenda actually are a couple of proposed forestation ordinances. But I want to go back to the beginning when the forestation board was started. And then and it's great to recognize topic. He's the guy that started. He was the creator of a forestation board and he wrote the ordinance under which the board has been operating for sixteen years. He did this with a background he had had working on metro tree related studies. It's how a metro tree can prove its tree ordinance. And he also went out with initiative and gathered ordinances from copies of ordinance from several of the cities. Then he worked with the Kentucky Division of Forestry Urban Coordinator that had such a position to implement a meaningful program here in Prospect with the help of two state foresters and about thirty volunteers. Okay, he organized and had the foresters train. These for these volunteer individuals. They made a complete inventory of all the street trees in the city, about fourteen hundred by location. That's street address. Species, size, condition. And that gave us the basic understanding of where the tree city, tree city stood, what they needed. And for his work in this, the Kentucky Division of Forestry nominated Todd to be named champion of trees by the Arbor Day Foundation. And the foundation took Kentucky's recommendation, the state recommendation, and invited him and Harriet out at their expense so they could give them the award as champion of trees. Okay? And Todd set the example and the forestation board works regularly to achieve the goals he set for excellent and community forestations here in Prospect. Very much thanks to Todd.
Sean Embry?
Okay, well, Lee talked about trees and forestation, but I have to mention ethics. But it's with really great pleasure that I am up to honor or be part of the group honoring Mayor Everly. In mid in the mid nineteen nineties, the Kentucky General Assembly passed chapter sixty-five, which established a requirement that all governing bodies have an ethics commission with pass pass the ordinances and have a commit have a commission. And that was for elected officials, certain employees and certain appointed officials. The city of Prospect back in the nineties, I wasn't here, so I don't know if I can be wholly accurate on that. But when. Prospect passed the ordinance, but that's all they did. And when Todd later became mayor, several years later, he 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 put together a three-member commission and sat down and worked on the ordinance. And, you know, had had the three members. You know, a few years later, Todd served on the ethics commission after he wasn't mayor anymore. And now he's going to serve again. We've got him appointed a second time. And I look forward to working with him because he's his meticulous attention to detail. And, you know, his wisdom and his knowledge really, really adds to this commission. And I was going to mention the chief, but I was part of that. I was a part. He's already he's already outed me on that. I was part of that group and it was very well run, meticulous detail. Probably one of the best committees I've ever been a part of. And one more thing. Several years ago, Todd actually had a few concerts going in the in the park, which were really fun. So and now they've continued, the summer concerts have continued. But in summary, the mayor's attention to detail and his very hard work has given Prospect a lot to be very proud of. And congratulations, Todd.
I've got one more person that I've asked to speak, but I want before Linda Wardell, before Linda speaks, I want to see if there's anyone else present who wanted to make make any comments. Yes, sir, Stuart.
I'm Stuart Miles and I was a resident of Prospect from two thousand and four to two thousand and twenty. And during that time, I was working with Linda and Parks. I don't want to steal with thunder because I know she's going to talk about that. But I feel remiss if I didn't personally thank Todd or his support in the parks. And I can tell you, it doesn't matter how much time and energy Linda and I put into it and the other people on the board. Everybody knows the power that the mayor has and whether a bunch of people who want to be active in something, how much they can do with that. And Mayor not only support, Todd only supported us, he was an advocate for us from Putney Pond and everything we did there during a time when you're going to find this shocking. There wasn't a lot of support for parks at certain periods of time. So now maybe a little easier lift for you, I hope, but back then, not so much. And during the economic turndown, we had made commitments when we got that grant at Putney Pond. And Todd kept those commitments and he built that road. And that was super important for success of that park. And Heritage Creek Park, the same thing. Todd not only was open to what we were doing, he was an advocate for it. And so Todd, I want to thank you. We would not have those parks parks without your support and commitment to those parks. And I will always be grateful for you for that. Thank you.
Susan, did you want to say anything? Okay. It's been said. All right. In that case, Linda Wardell.
Thank you. And I want to address Todd as as Stuart sort of did. Todd was really a champion for public parks and we're so grateful for that. He was instrumental in acquiring the property for Putney Pond and Woodlands. We got the grant from the Kentucky Heritage Land Conservation Fund to help purchase that land. But there was a whole lot of other things that had to do to comply with the terms of that grant. And Todd saw them all through. We needed to have biological and archaeological surveys. We needed to develop a resource management plan. We had to execute a conservation easement on the property. And Todd was there every step of the way. And as other people have said, very meticulous in making sure that that we addressed everything that needed to be done to be in compliance. In addition to working with the committee to get everything done, Todd also supported our committee's efforts to make improvements in the parks. And he also addressed the Kentucky Heritage Land Conservation Fund with a list of the improvement we wanted to make because we needed their approval before we could build anything in the parks. So we did the stone stairway, the hardened stone stairway, boardwalks, the woodland bridge, the new entry road off Timber Ridge Drive. And that took a lot of time and effort. So very, very grateful for that. And then, as Stuart alluded to, he, when Todd was mayor, he expanded the parks to include Heritage Creek Park. That property had been owned by the city, but it had never been specified as a public park. And it's now one hundred and nine acres and also endorsed park improvements there. Finally, Todd encouraged community volunteer workdays and scout eagle projects. And he even took the time to write personal letters to thank people for the their contributions to the parks. And he also supported and encouraged us to create activities such as open trail days and haunted haunted, what do we call halted trails at at Halloween time? And the final thing I'd like to mention is a little more personal. Quite often on Friday afternoons, after the office closed, Todd would be in his office and he'd give me a call. And I was usually starting to bake dinner. And so we'd talk, we tossed around various ideas for improving the parks, how to encourage volunteers, ways to get the community involved. And I have very fond memories of those conversations. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Todd, you get a chance for a rebuttal if you'd like to speak.
Thanks to everyone who contributed to the idea that the conference room be named after me and for all the people that I was able to work with while I was councilman and also as mayor. I was humbled and honored when Mayor Farnesley called me and told me what was afoot. But I thought I would like to give a brief, if not partial, history of the conference room. As a, as my wife, Harriet, will attest, I find it difficult to throw things away unless I'm certain they're no further use to me or any others. During my terms as councilmember and mayor, the storage room was full of filing cabinets, a utilitarian table with piles of paper representing various projects. And only a formal table in the mayor's office was available for conferences. And the city count where the city council held executive sessions when they went into executive session. Committees and the commissions let met in the library or the city hall break room right over here. And in recent years, the room became a conference room with a formal table, thanks to Mayor Farnesley. And and we have now fixed it up. And I asked him whether what happened to the cabinets and folding tables with piles of paper? And he noted that they were all kept on computers now. So I admit that I took that as progress. Many of you know me as having discomfort with being faded or celebrated. But tonight I am asking that many people that helped me, helped us accomplish what we did while I was mayor to share that discomfort. Some of you, in fact, I have a list and many of you are here tonight. I want to thank Linda Wardell, Lee and Sandy Tucey, Ron Condeth, Police Chief Jeff Sherard, Alan Simon, Loretta Earl, Stuart Miles, Carolyn Embry and John Embry, Susan and Nick Nicholson, Lynn Granger, Bill Bitter, Harry Harden, Linda Knox, Jacqueline McGrail, Steve Pennington, Herb Schelzaker and Peter Barber from the Division of Forestry and Steve Emly with Metropolitan Sewer District. These and many others have made my life with the city of project rewarding. I'm humbled humbled to have a critical space in city hall named after me. And I trust that the conference room will continue to be an inspiring place to facilitate creative ideas, effective solutions to problems, civil discourse and good government. I leave you at the favorite quote from former Congressman Barney Clark. Barney Frank, excuse me. Government is simply the name we give to those we choose, things we choose to do together. Thank you again, and I wish you and our great city the best as we look forward to celebrating our fiftieth birthday as a city in two thousand and twenty-four. Thanks, everyone.
Todd, thank you for your years of service and to Prospect and for your friendship. And I'm delighted that you're being honored this evening and and all these nice things have been said about you. I've learned, actually learned some things that I didn't know. I'd heard a lot of those stories, but not all of them. So it was terrific. All right, moving on with the agenda, we're going to. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, minutes of the September twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three and October sixteen, twenty twenty-three. City council meetings have been distributed. Is there a motion for their approval?
So I'm moved. Second.
Any discussion, any corrections, additions? Otherwise, all in favor, please say aye. Posed, okay, the minutes stand approved. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments from citizens. And Vaughn, you're signed up, but you'll speak a little later when we get to your point on the on the agenda. Linda, you're signed up, but we've, do you want to speak to the forestation ordinance? Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
So I am not on the forestation board, but I attend a lot of their meetings and I'm very impressed with the hardworking people that are part of that board. I read, um, the proposed amendments, versions A and B. And I would strongly encourage the council to endorse draft A on first reading tonight. Um, I know that the members of the forestation board worked very conscientiously on this draft modifying the existing ordinance. Um, I believe it is a clear improvement to the existing ordinance and describes in, in more detail, the duties and responsibilities of the board and also of the city. Having said that, I request, very strongly request that the council reject draft B of the above ordinance. It appears to me that the purpose of draft B is essentially to gut the forestation board. I believe the forestation board makes a big contribution to protecting the tree canopy in our city. The board has the authority to specify recommended trees for various locations, appropriate spacing of street trees, identifying appropriate distance from curbs, sidewalks and utilities. They're also responsible for the identification and, um, and remediation of hazardous trees. If draft B is adopted, the forestation board, as I see it, would essentially cease to exist. And our city would lose the benefit of the hours of volunteer labor and expertise of these very dedicated board members. So I guess.
Another there, there are other members of the forestation board, uh, present. And, and I know Lee will be speaking in a few minutes when he does his report, but would any other members want to say anything? They're welcome to. Okay. With that, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the mayor's update on city matters. So I'll, I'll report on two or three things. One, uh, we had a Veterans Day event at the John Evans Pavilion in Little Hunting Creek Park on Tuesday, November 7. Thank you to the planning committee, which included among others, uh, David Holmes, councilman and councilman and former mayor John Evans. David's a US Army veteran. John Evans is a US Navy veteran. There were remarks, uh, at the event by retired Major Marine Corps Major General Rick Huck. And also retired US Navy Rear Admiral Stuart O'Brien. So it's pretty impressive for a city like Prospect to have two flag officers, uh, participating in the, in our ceremony. The participation by these Sons of the American Revolution Color Guard was also much appreciated. They did a terrific job. I will tell you that I was down here on Sunday and they were over in the park practicing. So they get it right and they did, they did a terrific job. Uh, the next thing I want to mention is a, uh, upcoming, upcoming art exhibition in city hall, art in city hall. A committee is being chaired by Kathy Sauer. And there are other members of our committee. They've worked hard. They've got artists lined up. They've got graphics, uh, posters prepared and invitations ready. The opening will be on Sunday, January 14th from two to five. And the exhibition will run through Friday, March 8. And the exhibition will be open to residents or other visitors during regular city hall business hours. Uh, cosponsors of the event, in addition to the city of Prospect are the Prospect Area Chamber of Commerce and Kroger. We appreciate their participation. I'll mention briefly J, uh, Jefferson County League of Cities. Don Gibson's gonna report, I think, uh, in a few minutes, but I've begun attending those meetings now, board meetings and, and JC LC meetings. They've been very informative and very helpful. Um, and I appreciate Don's involvement. I see he's learned, learned a lot there. I certainly learned a lot, the few that I've been to. So thank you, Don, for all your work on that. We also attended on this past Thursday, Jefferson County League of Cities Annual Dinner. Don and Kathy Gibson were present, John and Sally Evans, Chris and Vicky Gorman, John Carter was present, and I also attended. Louisville Mayor Craig Greenberg delivered, uh, remarks. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the forestation, um, ordinances that are before the council this evening. The council is asked to consider giving a first reading to the city's existing, existing forestation ordinance. Section 97.13 provides that the city has the right in consultation with the forestry board, uh, has the authority to order the removal of a tree if that tree presents a danger to life or property. Over time, both the city and the forestation board, uh, appear to have concluded that the authority to order removal of a tree resided with the forestation board. But the ordinance, I believe, is clear that, that, that authority rests with the city in consultation with the forestation board. The same is true with regard to any fines that might be levied. Those are levied by the city on the recommendation of the forestation board. So the people that are responsible for that are our code enforcement officer, Rick Wilson, who reports to Jeff Sherard, our chief, who reports in turn to me. So if there's a, uh, a problem that comes up, we, we consult with one another and try to, uh, resolve situations to get forestation board out of the enforcement business and into promoting trees and, and that sort of thing. But we take on the perhaps stickier work of enforcement. Uh, thus far, that's, that's worked very well. I'm, I'm still learning. We've still got a ways to go, but I think we're, we're making good progress with that. So that's the way we're approaching things under the existing ordinance. The ordinance that's, uh, before you for first reading, version A, it, it seeks to further memorialize the way we're operating now. As I say, I think the ordinance is clear enough that the way we're doing it is what was intended. But the, uh, the changes that we're proposing set out, set out a scheme that I think is, uh, will, will stand the city in good stead for years to, years to come. So I understand there may also be a motion to refer both versions to a committee for further consideration. I would ask the council to consider, um, giving a first reading to version A and making whatever decision it was to make with regard to version B. If the, if the council does approve a committee, I would encourage that the committee, uh, carry, carry out its dealings in an open manner. That all citizens be invited to participate and be heard on any, uh, any aspect of the forestation ordinance. I would request that the council should, should follow that route, should it seek to refer this to a committee, that the meetings be held in a place that's accessible to all members of the public. So that would be city hall or any other place that's open to everyone, uh, who's, who's a resident in Prospect. So, uh, I think it's important that our citizens have notice of the meetings and have an opportunity to be heard. That's the definition of due process. And I was in law school for a year or more before I realized what due process is. It's pretty simple. It's two things. It's notice and the opportunity to be heard. So, uh, if, if we're going to have a process beyond the process we've already had, this, this ordinance has been vetted by the forestation board for, for months. And I've worked on it. Uh, Don Gibson was present at some of the forestation board meetings where the ordinance was discussed and he made suggestions along the way. Forestation board meetings are open to every citizen. The agenda is published and available to everyone. So if, if we go down the road of having further discussion beyond first reading this evening, um, then, then I'm hopeful that the council will, will set up a system that's open, uh, that everyone could participate in. So that concludes the mayor's report. Uh, yeah, let me find my agenda and then I'll. Yeah, I think at this time to accommodate, uh, Vaughn, your schedule, I think we'll move you up on the agenda. And if you're prepared to go forward at this point, or I think you mentioned there may be other people who, who, who might be here. You think they, they, you're, you're the person, huh? Okay. Are you prepared to go forward? Okay. We'll, we'll, we'll move the, uh, first item of new business, which is the approval of revised detailed development district plan and binding elements for the construction of a bank located at 5907 Timber Ridge Drive. Vaughn is with the architectural firm that's designed the, um, Chase Bank branch that's going to go into the, uh, along Timber Ridge in the Kroger parking lot. Right. I think, uh, are you gonna get a trap on it? And if you, if you, maybe if you put that over where the chief is standing, people, the council can see it, but also people in, people in the, uh, council room might be able to see it also. Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Vaughn Benson. I'm with FMS Architects, Architect of Record on behalf of the Chase Bank Project. As was mentioned, this is proposed for the Kroger Shopping Center. It's an out parcel. The branch is, uh, approximately, uh, 3,400 square feet. It will be a full service branch that allows for manual transactions, wealth management. There is a 24-hour ATM vestibule as well as a drive-up ATM and after-hours depository. There's no teller window, just ATM transactions for the drive-up window. Um, we presented our design to Kroger, which has been reviewed and accepted. So we are here to, well, I am here, excuse me, to field any questions that the council may have in regards to the building design.
That, that your materials have been distributed to the council and you've met a few of us by Zoom. I don't know if you want to take a minute and talk about the, the drawings. So and that's the brick sample.
So we have engaged the council prior to the start of the design for comments and direction. We have used materials that, uh, mimic what is going on in the existing shopping center. It's an all-brick facade. Uh, the sample that we found was the closest match we could find to the existing brick. And we tried to mimic the detailing as far as cornices and other masonry detailing that occurs in the building. And we feel that we have come up with a design that complements and blends in with the area.
And the, uh, the, the front of the bank faces Kroger.
Yes, so the lower, uh, the board to the lower left, that's the north elevation, which would be the main entry, which would be facing Kroger. And the south elevation on the board on top, it would be facing Timber Ridge. That's also where the drive-up ATM lane would be.
Any members of the council have any questions or?
Oh, I do. Um, our ordinance calls for, um, uh, being similar to the architecture of the buildings in a development. And I wonder, you know, that roof line doesn't, uh, doesn't fit that criteria. Is there any potential for changing?
So initially we engaged and we asked a question about the roof requirements. And there was no specific requirement stating that we needed to have the pitched roof or any of those type of elements. So we went with this because it complements our mechanical design with our rooftop units and clearances that will be included on top of the roof. And doing a pitch design, not impossible, but it inhibits the uh, function of the current mechanical design with airflow to be required on, from the roof.
Well, I, I understand the physics of it, but, uh, but we do have an ordinance that requires that. And, uh, you can have uh, a false front or that mimics the, the roof lines of the, the whole Kroger complex. And then you have wall breeds and you get the all-staff building, all of which are similar. And I don't even, I don't even know how you characterize the architecture. I mean, it's, is it traditional, was it colonial, was it all of the above? But that, uh, as I should be at that roof line up, doesn't come close.
Well, and I'm not certain that, that I know that the ordinance requires that it be the same as the other. And perhaps you'd better consult the ordinance to make sure that's the requirement. It's a requirements requirement, but if it's, uh, suggestion, that, that could be very important.
It's a shell.
Have you had a copy?
No.
Well, do you want us to recess and get a copy?
Well, yeah, sure. If that's important right now.
I don't, it's not important to me. It's important to you. I think that's all I.
I think, you know, we're, we shouldn't be sitting here trying to uh, develop variances. You know, if it's a bad ordinance, it's bad ordinance.
So I'm not trying to develop a variance at all. I'm trying to understand what the ordinance says.
Let's get a copy of the ordinance.
The current plan shields the mechanical home roofs.
Correct.
So it's above the roof line itself.
Okay.
With a.
The parapets for the roof, um, this area. So
Okay.
We have a lowered roof deck in that area. So the parapets of the building would conceal all of our mechanical.
So it wouldn't be visible.
No.
Okay. And then we talked about briefly about the dumpster placement on our conference call. Were there any alternatives to moving that?
The positioning of the building and circulation for a truck to actually access limits us to location of the dumpster enclosure.
Okay. Uh, I was thinking you might be able to move the building forward a little bit to create some space behind. No?
We could look at the option, but the placement right now allows for maximizing parking as well as getting circulation around the building to access the ATM lane.
Okay. I just, the dumpster is going to be out in the middle of the parking lot, basically, in front of the buildings.
John Evans.
I'm gonna ignore that, uh, vehicular access building. Is there a drawing that shows? It's traffic along Timber Ridge. Do I go into the bank or should I be shopping somewhere around the bank or that somewhere?
Uh, I believe he has some of the site plans, but yes, access would be, they would have to enter the shopping center.
Go on the parking line, the northern parking line, then to the bank.
So there is no direct access from Timber Ridge.
Other questions while we're retrieving the ordinance?
It's a nice looking building.
Thank you.
I have a question. How many parking spaces in the Kroger parking lot will we lose when you put the spade in?
Sorry, I don't have an exact count right now. I'm not sure if it's visible on the drawings that we have now.
It's gonna take a, it's gonna take, it's, it's, yeah, west corner. And we kind of divided it with little parking, it's gonna be the southwest corner.
Yeah, and the
Yes. The footprint is, footprint's 3,600 square feet, so you're gonna lose some parking.
They would park, they would park somewhere else in there, right?
That was discussed in the metro.
Yeah. That's a, that, that's a good question and a good topic. It's not part of this discussion this evening. That, that's a, that's a discussion that we allow the Kroger to own. So the land where the trees are. And that they, uh, so that, so that's, that is a request for Chase to remove. And that they, so that, so that's, that is a request for Chase to remove trees. And we've paid a brief that will address that. That's left, that's left the address. I think we've got a pretty clear understanding on that. So the discussion tonight is the building itself.
The actual construction, the building will will require trees removed that are in islands now. So I think what you all said correct calls, so within the Kroger parking lot itself right now. I think the other trees that people are concerned with are along the outer edge there of Timber Ridge. And that's gonna be worked, worked out with forestation, to my understanding.
You know, all these people that wouldn't, wouldn't anticipate the reconstruction of the bank.
Pending the council's approval and any other necessary entitlements, we would like to start construction first quarter of twenty twenty four, and the bank would be open by beginning of third quarter.
Is this a prototype building that you're using right now for multiple locations?
The interior is prototypical, but the exterior design is custom for this location.
The original design had siding or something, didn't it?
It was fiber cement board, yeah, and some masonry as well.
So.
Yes.
Everybody on this side.
Unless I'm missing something, Merit appears that the shell deals with material and color, and it doesn't deal with. Is that what I, I'm skimming it.
So it shall all be of the same material and color.
Correct.
It doesn't say.
I withdraw the comment. I had an older one, and apparently that was scratched because it's.
On residential, there are some pitch requirements, I know that.
That's not pitch. This was the word. Wasn't, no, it wasn't materials. It was conform to architecture in that style, and then we must have admitted that.
A fair point to bring up.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, and any other questions for Vaughn? Or any other discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve the resolution? Is there discussion? In the absence of a discussion, we'll talk again about Sarah Hunt?
Yes.
Tom Gibson?
Yeah.
Tom Evans?
Yes.
And David Holmes?
Yes.
John Clark?
Yes.
Frank Moultrie?
Yes.
So, thank you, Vaughn.
Thank you.
Council approved the resolution. Appreciate you coming down. Drive safely. Go on back tomorrow. I'll send you paperwork that you're gonna want from us. Okay, great. Thank you all. Okay. So now, I guess I shall move on to the next item of this.
The financial reports I emailed to you the day after the council packet, so I'm reviewing financials for the October. Cash on hand, which today represents a checking account, a one year CD that matures in February. The KLC investments, which include two investment funds. And in the last month, we've added money to a money market fund at Republic Bank. The total of all those accounts is now at four point three million dollars. Our expenditures for the last month were around six hundred fifty four thousand eight hundred seventy. Anyway, we have lots of cash on hand and very few expenses overall at the moment, and entertain any questions you might have.
Yeah, so much cash because we just collected the property tax. Unfortunately, a lot of the, fortunately or unfortunately, a lot of that's gonna get spent. Any questions for John?
Are we, the finance committee did an excellent job earlier. Are we we rolling these things into a higher interest rate?
Okay, so we the committee did meet recently. We are, you know, looking at all the terms and the rates. The next big investment will be the maturing CD of a million plus dollars in in February. We're meeting in January to again discuss how they want to reinvest that money. But of course, we're looking for security, safety, and in terms and and yield, so those will be all the factors that they decide. There is some discussion of potentially reinvesting some interest income earned into maybe some more S and P type five hundred funds. That hasn't been decided yet, but that's some of the advice that I've heard and that we're talking about right now.
Is is that a legal issue or?
Now, that is perfectly legal for us to do that. It's more about the city deciding whether they want to do that risk. And timing.
I think that's that's up parameters of how much you can do. Right now, everything is either in checking or it's earning very low interest rate. We've got a money market at Republic, which pays four percent. We've got a money market at Kentucky League of Cities through PNC that's paying over five percent. And we've got another government secured fund through KLC that's paying also five percent. So we've got it kind of about as well placed as we can, we're trying to be real.
Yeah, well, it sounds great.
Yeah.
Good job.
So thanks, John. Thanks, Frank, for your questions. Okay, commission and board reports for a station board, Lee?
Forestation Board is looking forward to meeting with Chase Bank representatives to discuss the issue of trees. They did provide some information. Some of them seem to have changed. We never had a full description of their actual plan, so it's hard to to comment on it. We certainly want to minimize any any loss of trees, and I have to say that Chase has offered some compensation or funding planning of alternative locations along the city. So that's kind of where we are on that. Our Arbor Fest, which we had in October twenty one, was probably the most successful one we've ever had. We had a good turn on residents and distributed almost all the trees. We had a few pawpaws left, like two or three, and those were planted in Little Hunting Creek Park by volunteer working for parks, okay? We're working on a property in Gunson Lane backing up against Underland in the states. The Gunson Lane representative brought our attention to a hazardous pine a couple of months ago, and they thought it was on city property. Ron Lynn the Nogs, our wood arborist, and myself all went up to there, and it turned out it was not on city property. They would say maybe it's on Gunson property. Well, they researched it for about a month and finally sent me an email a couple of days ago, said, well, belongs to somebody else. So it belongs to somebody in the states. We're gonna run that down, okay? And next month, we'll be working on fall planting. No, our fall planting trees have all been ordered, the locations have been marked. We've been waiting for the tree provider to dig them out. They have to have certain damp sail condition, soil conditions. But that's gonna happen after Thanksgiving. We've done planting in December before contractors have been set there, and also that contractor agreed to water and weed and mold certain trees we planted last year too, and hadn't received enough maintenance, see what I said? Lastly, I wanted to comment about the issue of the forest and forestation board ordinance, possible revisions. Let me say first of all that there's five people on the forestation board right now. They have cumulatively fifty five years of experience working on prospect tree issues. So this is not a lightly taken endeavor. And the mechanisms we have proposed to change are mostly added to clarifying procedures and whose responsibility for what. And in particular, to make sure builders who destroy trees or don't take care of their tree responsibilities pay up. We had an incident just in the last year. Where a builder in the Breakers was reported by an innocent representative to have has this tree while the new Breakers house was under construction. We wrote letters, the city wrote letters to the builder. They were ignored. Finally, the tree, the city actually paid three thousand dollars to have that tree removed. And the forestation board fined the builder five hundred dollars for refusing to comply, even though we offered to waive any fines if they took care of the tree. Well, they never did. But John Carter and our good code enforcement guy came up with a scheme to deny this builder any further permits. Of course, they like the builder in the Breakers. He sold the house we're talking about for a million dollars. No more permits, so you pay up. Well, but now that's written or would be written into the ordinance. Ordinance also provides for adding flexibility. We've never actually fined any resident of prospect for trees, but the way the ordinance is written as it stands was you can either find someone or not do anything. So we'd like provision, and we have in fact done this, where we can offer the resident who has a problem with a tree and they haven't met it. Hey, you can replace the tree, maybe some other place on your vacation. We can even give you a free tree at Arbor Fest, you know, instead of finding someone. So that's now a possibility or would be a possibility. And then we'd like to expand the board from five to seven. And that would provide more input for more residents on a regular basis. Our meetings are always open. We've had representatives, HOAs, from several different meetings over the years, but would like to make sure that there's as much participation as possible. If you get twelve people, it's probably unworkable, but we could certainly maybe benefit from having a couple more, and we could share the work a little bit. So far as the alternate version proposed, this would essentially eliminate the forestation board's current programs. Linda Wardell said it very well, better than I can. And it would do things like have this tree remediation and insurance requirements for tree cutting companies working on city streets. And it would complicate efforts by the board and the city to take care of the city trees and enhance prospects tree canopy. So we certainly would support going with our proposal. Last item, we're gonna be working on tree city certification in December. The tree city certification comes from the Arbor Foundation. But it's actually run through state, so we prepare fill out a questionnaire basically about what was done, how much money is spent, et cetera, et cetera. Do we have a board? Do we have an ordinance? That actually is approved by the state and then finally issued as a recertification by Arbor Day Foundation. Any questions?
Questions for Lee?
Chase Bank, I understand you're looking at seventeen trees.
They're certainly gonna take trees out of the parking lot, you know, they can't have a building unless they remove the parking lot. The other trees, we're a little uncertain about. They gave us a picture originally. It showed really some beautiful mature trees right by the Kroger little sign, you know? Now, it's unclear what they're planning to do with that now, and there's some other trees. The forestation board would certainly have jurisdiction over their affecting any street trees. So if it goes along Timber Ridge, that's a street tree, you know, so something will have to be worked out. Like the prospect continue to grow as a business community of of a certain type, but we also like to preserve our trees, so.
Yeah, and the site that's probably, it's not in their lease grant, there are twenty one trees. And basically nineteen are proposed to be removed in the drawing we we proceed. Nineteen out of twenty one to be removed.
So that, so nine of those are in the parking lot, though.
My count is seven that's in the parking lot, but I think you got eight in the parking.
Yeah, I just have a hard time understanding why we consider very much that those that are taking that mature healthy trees that have been around twenty five years replace where I understood with ancient damage threats. I don't know why we leave them.
Yeah, a one or two inch tree doesn't replace a twenty five year old tree.
Lee, are you sure we have jurisdiction? Is there sidewalk there between the the trees in between sidewalk and the curb that they want to take out along Timber Ridge?
I'd say we really don't on the forestation board understand exactly what they're proposing. So we're gonna have to meet with them. I'm sure they'll be cooperative and share information, and we'll take it from there.
Okay, my impression is the folks we've been dealing with have all been very cooperative. And I think they'll try by the rules, we can reach a agreement with them, we'll reach an agreement if we can. You can tell them.
We'll tell them.
Thanks, thanks. Okay, other reports, library committee?
Library committee, yeah, John reached out to me on the fourteenth. And that was in Trinidad to prepare the work for this meeting. What I would like to say is that the the people that volunteer at the library are a very capable group. And I stopped by the book sale, spoke with Beth at length, and we thought it was a good idea to get everybody together to kind of have brainstorming, exchange of ideas, and try to make sure that we have someone assessing new books, doing reviews and and things of that nature, because the new books that come in are the ones that people go to immediately. So I would like to say that I feel like the library is a very integral part of prospect. And we need to make sure that it continues to thrive, so. I'd like just to say that, but there is a survey out right now on library services, so we're going, we postponed our gathering of the volunteers until the results of that come in, and then we'll get together and take on those things in in the survey. Try to any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Any questions for John?
Sorry, I kind of stumbled through that.
John, do you have any idea when the remodel survey will be in, or when one of them will be in, so that we can? have a whole, we're the holidays and I think if we have a meeting, there are basically eighty volunteers.
Okay.
Will be one or two from a meeting.
Yeah, it's difficult to get everybody together.
And they understand and they know the but you know, if we didn't have advanced notice.
The survey went out for Forestation and the library, correct?
Correct.
It's, you have the
I haven't closed, I haven't closed it, but I can close it anytime or we can send a reminder.
How many responses?
We probably got eighty or so. At least eighty.
Eighty is a very good number.
That's very Or Survey Monkey, that is, that's very good. Yeah.
Well, I mean, two thousand people don't use the library, so.
Well, that's one thing we need to make increase the awareness of the library.
Also, the, the, well, we don't have to go into the, into the survey. But I want to thank John for stepping in to assist with the libraries. Since, since we both did this transition, I've come to realize, I knew it was a valuable asset. But as I've gotten to Beth and some of the other volunteers, we've just got a great resource there and certainly I'll do everything I can to support your efforts, Beth and John's, and we'll help you make it an even greater library. Okay, thank you, John, for that. Any, any questions for John? Don Gibson, I stole some of your thunder talk back to the cities, but I'll let you make a report on the other.
What I understand back in the early fifties, there were about twenty cities within the old term. They got together from the Jersey County. That's going today, there's about eighty-six. And so one of the things, one of the things the board is working on is updating its files. And they came up with a new vision statement that we kind of read. The Jersey County League of Cities exists, one of the sovereignty and home rule cities in Jersey County. That provide for wide range of services of wide latitude, their citizens and ensure the state of the homeless cities and everything down into the relationship of leadership supporting professional development. Now, how all in conversion to a manager with them? It is that once a month, there's a meeting with Mayor Evans, former mayor, gives a function when the representative of Prospect. So the third, the third version of every line, we meet from five thirty to about six thirty and go talk about ongoing topics. And we can bring up their duties like they said. From, from Saturday, we got lots of information dinner movie. And they bring in different speakers, since the last, or last week, we got a few representatives. But Kipda, we went through their improvement, the things that were needed a lot. Fundamentally, if, if any governmental agency wants any money from federal or state funds, they have to go through Kipda. And that stands for, in fact, the Indiana Planning and Development. There are three main sections of Kipda. One is community economic development. They provide a lot of energy services and bring up money you need for city parks. And to take you by the fringe protection and that's the neighborhood providing services and working with us ninety-two, five-two. And their common soldier services. And like this morning, I was supposed to TV, they had to have that Derek care. Everything builds on weeks. If somebody wants to there is something, it's on wheels, they go to Kipda. And the, the each one of them may provide plenty of technical services, but they're overseen by health board directors and agencies, trying to maintain that their management ability is in charge of that. And so what it does, it takes funds and folks to then to the community or community, they need to set the party, the institution. Their, their calendars, countywide, it's proven areas in basically in North Carolina. To Harrison County, Spencer County, Old Town, Kelly County, Old Town, Indian County, then
Any questions for Don? The presentation by the individuals from Kipda, I've had to be very informed and I'm glad that I was there. It's that social service piece of it is pretty impressive and how, how hands-on they are. They're, they're involved. There, there are instances that occur with some regularity in an urban area where children are turned over to their grandparents. But sort of by default, because the parents are not capable of carrying out their duties. And they'll, they'll get calls where a child has literally been left at a grandparent's house. Grandparent has no clothing for the child, has no none of the things that you need to be in the parenting role. So Kipda steps in and they they, they help with the transition from that kind of situation. So that is just one example. I was very impressed with the whole, with the whole operation. Seemed like very good people, very competent people.
It often referred like a sort of this sort of branch.
Thank you, Don. Thanks for all your work with the League of Cities. Jeff Carrar?
This will probably be the shortest one ever. Essentially, nothing happened last month. That's the truth. Not, not, not a single felony report, which is great. Only three misdemeanor reports. Two of those were, were different sets of neighbors, had minor disagreements and then filed a report. And so that's pretty doggone good. The house checks were up. They were almost double over the previous period from last year. So we continue to do a good job on that. Accident reports were down. There was only one injury accident for the entire month. I mean, that's pretty good. That's probably the easiest report we've ever had, at least in the twelve years I've been here. We did have firearms training today. I think we got everybody through but one person that it, that was off and couldn't get him in. But everybody shot in the nineties, ninety percentile or above. Most of them above ninety-five. So the switch over to that new weapon with the the infrared sights and everything like that is very good, very good. Sergeant McKean is our firearms instructor and he just does a phenomenal job. I've been doing this almost forty years, so I can tell you, I go like twice a year to the range. And I've been through a gazillion firearms instructors over the year. He's as good as anybody that I ever dealt with along the way. We're very fortunate to have him. His instructions are very good. He's very safety conscious on the range. There's no games. There's a lot of rules involved in it. He does a fantastic job. We are extremely fortunate. Now, the weird news is it's very difficult for us and all of law enforcement to get ammunition right now. When you place an order, it's going to take almost a year to get it. That's how long it is. And that's for regular duty ammo for your guns. So which is okay for us because we change ours out once a year anyway. So we'll be okay. We've got enough on hand to do that. And practice ammo is a little bit easier to get, and that's what we shot today. But it's pretty sad that it's easier to get, to go out and buy a thousand rounds for an AR-15 without having to wait. But the police departments have to wait a year to get duty in. That's the state of things right. But I'll get off my salted hooks.
And any questions for the chief? Don Gibson's got a question for you, chief.
I mean, several people, of course, have concerns about the US forty-two. With, with our forty-two project. And it's Kentucky transportation, it's a little bit frightening. It is with government nineteen thirty-eight or something and it's, it is what it is. It's going to cost several billion dollars to get another land capital. David and I approached Tom Ball, Kentucky Transportation, and asked for some blinking lights to just to slow people down. Oh, this is so, there's not enough oxygen giving us, something about some of that right there. And we can appeal it, but the appeal is going to be based upon, yes. It's, I guess there've been one accident. It was a fatality.
There have been two, there have been two fatalities in the hill. But actually, speed was not a contributing factor in either one of them. One of which was in a light rain. It was a crossover accident. It was a head-on collision. And then the other one was a driver that was impaired. Actually, it wasn't alcohol, it was drugs. And there have been two of them since I've been here. And then the other accident that we had that was a fatality was on Cover Bridge Road. It wasn't speed either. Actually, a guy was dodging an animal. And it was a real simple collision. He went off the road and broke his leg in the accident and died of an embolism two days later in the hospital. It was just a freak occurrence. But that qualifies as a fatal accident because he died as a result of the injury from the accident. I know I didn't help you answer your question. I was just, I was giving you the history of the fatal accident in the last twelve years in Prospect.
The, regardless of that.
Right.
You know, nothing else, it's the perception of, of, of not being in a situation. Some people like to run out fast for some reason. And I think we've explored everything we've been exploring. I was just wondering if there's anything you guys could do about that. That perception of, of not being in a safe situation. Anybody else on the council?
I have a question. That, the one fatal accident with the big truck that went over the side, that was during the day. What was the other?
All three of them have occurred during the daylight hours.
I wasn't aware of that.
We were out there until two o'clock in the morning to from the accident, but all of them occurred. One of them's like twelve-thirty, another one was one-thirty in the afternoon. And then the one on Cover Bridge was at like ten-thirty in the morning.
So, so
You would think that there would be more in the evenings because it's really dark.
It is dark.
And I mean, it is really, really dark. If you're out here at ten o'clock at night, the whole place is really dark, even the ones that are out here. It's like the lighting is really different. Or either that or I'm old and my cataracts are getting damaged. But it's, it is hard to see.
In, in talking with people from Bridgepoint, I have not met a single person from Bridgepoint who hasn't complained about how difficult it is to come out of Bridgepoint day or night because of the volume of traffic and the speed. I don't care what the department.
I know that over the years, the state has looked at that and they do their surveys and then, but it's one of those deals that and I know it is a federal highway, so they're entirely in control. We can talk to, we're blue in the face. In fact, I think Todd addressed some of that when he was here. Because he tried to get a light out front here. And I think they flat out told him that they can't, they couldn't justify it. And then on top of the other lights that are there, they just won't do it. For whatever reason, they perceive Dixie Highway to be different than they do here because they got them every ten feet out there.
So we have talked to Don and I to the Department of Transportation about putting signs up there. And they did put signs that indicate that there's a turn going into Bridgepoint at, at the top and the bottom. But the ones we wanted were flashing ones that we had seen that were solar powered. And they, at this stage, haven't agreed to that, although I don't think they completely understand why we want them to be flashing as opposed to. So how many of you have seen the new sign that they put up probably two months ago? Did any of, so yeah, I mean, that's the point. We put new signs up there.
One of the things that you would run into down there, and there are signs that you can get, like you can get the speed limit sign that'll flash if you're coming over.
Their permission to do, to do it. They have to approve it. Yeah, statistically, they say it's not
Even if you paid to put it out there? If, if you put it up as a temporary one, I mean, they've got movable ones.
The speed, the speed.
Well, the speed trailer or whatever, they're not going to tell me I can or can't put it out there. I'll put it wherever the hell I want to put it. But that, but they also have the other kind that are made to be mobile, made to be movable. What I'm getting at is I want, because you know, you can actually use those drive-in stakes and mount it to that. But the problem with that is the area that you want to put it is so tree covered that you would not, you would not get the solar power out of it. That's what we've run into with the flock cameras because putting them at the entrance to all the subdivision. Three of the four that we're putting at, we couldn't use the solar power. We have to go our way.
We've got too many trees.
I know. You guys are obviously, we got it all here for the town because there's no place that we, I mean, we got to pay electricity now. You got to get in touch with LGD out here.
My brother was the engineer that was in charge of creating traffic signs for about twenty years. He told me one time that, that happens out of ten that they that was what they recommend for you in certain engineering specification, et cetera, et cetera. But the times that people get very frustrated was when the governor's office would call and say, you're going to put a sign there. So it may be that you're pushing the wrong buttons. Maybe that we go to the governor's office and try to get them to use the flashing lights that were flashing lights. Well, I know people get this, trouble with him to find one. And the governor's office will go and say, we're going to put a, Chris is your brother.
Anyway, the public needs to know that we're working on this and we haven't given up. And the mayor said that he'll try to pull some strings to, to see if we can't get something done. Because it's, it's really frustrating when you talk to people from Bridgepoint who say, when I come out of Bridgepoint to go left, I go right. And I go down to the landings and turn around with the light and go up the hill that way.
That's what we, that's what we do out of here, out of the office in the afternoon. Well, we turn right and go up to Fox Harbor and turn around to come back.
I mean, I can't imagine anything more frustrating.
Is this, is this a metro? Would metro have any jurisdiction over these signs?
No.
No, it's a federal highway. It's a state thing, but all, but ironically, Metro maintains the light. Yeah, through a contract. Yeah, like, like when the lights go flashing and stuff. We actually call metro engineering and then they come out and take care of it.
And then the people
It's a really convoluted thing. And then when we get a deer killed out here, that's even a different call.
Okay, thank you, John. Okay, now we're in new business. We've addressed the first item, it was the resolution relating to the bank, construction bank. The next item on the agenda is first reading of ordinance six thirty-two, series twenty twenty-three in order to relating to the amendments, modification of chapter ninety-two, nuisances of the code of ordinance of the city of Prospect. Then that actually came before the council last month for a first reading. It received a first reading. Our city attorney advised us that with some changes that were made in the interim. It needs to come back before the council this evening for, again, for a first reading. So this nuisance ordinance is on this evening for a first reading. And Sean, do you, I guess first thing we ought to see is there a motion to give the ordinance a first reading?
I'll have second. I'll have second.
Okay, um, discussion and John, maybe you know, we start with you.
Uh, well, the, the changes that were made were not major, major changes. I guess they were enough to warrant. Doing another first reading, but there were some trailing issues that were discovered. Uh, after the first reading, uh, that needed, needed to be fixed. So, uh, that was done. Operation John Carter. I have a couple of comments.
Okay.
I, I think that, um, since we're, since this is the first reading and we have an opportunity to do some of the other things. Uh, the first thing is the issue of the pond and the spa. Whether deleting that is is something we want to do. I, I would be in favor of that. Because the way it's written, uh, were we to pass that, we'd, uh, we'd find a chain link fence or something around Southern's ponds. Number two, number two on the golf course and also in the bridges, uh, the way, the way it's currently worded. So I don't think. Pond belongs in there, nor do I think spa, spa does in the.
Is it, is that in the current draft?
It's on page, page ten, um.
Section U.
The bottom. Section U. It's at the very last of page ten.
We actually had a citizen delay's question about its coin.
Right.
On his property, it's two feet deep. This would maybe require a fence, but then. I, I agree with Frank. We should strike on spa.
And where, where is that in this paragraph?
At the bottom.
Section U, right after filling pool.
So is there a motion to amend? So I guess we need to do, probably need to do the first reading.
Yeah.
Before we amend it or no?
Well, if we can, we can change it before we have the first reading, can't we?
Yeah, that that probably makes more sense.
Okay, the other one is something near and dear to everybody's hearts. The, um, uh, I think the definition of tree ought to coincide with the forestation board's definition of tree.
For it.
Page five, mid midway under the definition, it just says tree. Is that what you were referring to?
Yeah.
Well, it, it does refer it back to chapter ninety-seven.
But that, uh, it says twelve feet. The chapter ninety-seven says fifteen, or what is it? Five meters and, uh, anyways, it's a little different. I think it should be the same.
Agreed. So is it just the height of the tree that you're trying to amend?
No, there's other words in it. I don't have it right here.
So it's, well, that's gonna be difficult for us to amend if we don't have.
Well, no, you've got it here.
So that would version, version A.
Correct.
And also in the, um.
Well, can we finish one, Frank, before we go to another?
Um, sure, I mean, that's.
Yeah, I'm trying to keep up. We've got so far, we've got removing the word pong.
And spa.
And spa.
Yes, I'm page ten.
Page ten. And now we're talking about conforming the definition of tree on page five.
Yes.
Forestation ordinance.
Yeah, to match.
So where in the forestation one is the definition of trees?
Two.
But that's, that's proposed.
That's the proposed, that's the proposed version.
Well, uh, it, the words are a little different. One is says a single trunk and one says one dominant trunk. And references the. International Society of Arbiculture and the other just references chapter ninety-two, ninety-seven. So the words, the words are different.
Yeah.
I mean, the intent's the same.
I mean, it's general one.
But if we're gonna, if we're gonna amend it, we might as well make it right.
Well, I also like the fact that the forestation board suggestion. Defines it as part of the international society's definition. So that really helps us, I think, make it very much clearer. So Frank, is your motion to insert, to delete our current definition and insert.
Yeah, replace.
Draft version of, uh.
Yeah. Replace this one with that one.
Okay.
And, and also, uh, the word shrub is used in here. But we don't have a definition of shrub, although we do in the, um. Uh, we do in the, uh, in the forestation thing. So I think if we're gonna use the word shrub, we ought to have a definition for it.
Yeah.
Can we reference the forestation? Ordinance?
So we would add a new definition.
Yeah, wherever, where it fits.
Yeah.
We need, we need to come up. Yeah.
Is there a definition in the forestation?
Yes.
Sure. Shrubber bushes. Any low multiple stem.
Other proposed changes? I'll, I'll, I'll review the bidding. Get a little further along, but any, any others, Frank, anything else?
No.
Anybody else? Okay, so what I'm trying to keep up, what I've got is on page five sixteen, we would insert a new definition, insert the word shrub. And then provide, provide the definition that's in the proposed forestation. Uh, ordinance draft A there and the, um. A little further down on page five, the definition of tree would match the definition that's in the proposed, uh, draft A of forestation ordinance.
It would be, uh, it would be the one that is in, uh, what you call draft B, I guess.
No, draft A.
It's draft A.
No, draft A is too. There's too many words. Any low multiple stem woody vegetations. That, that's regardless of where it's. Regardless of where it is. We're looking for a definition of shrub. We're, we're not saying.
Of shrub, yeah.
Okay.
Both of them are defined.
You wanna match the forestation ordinance?
Yes. The, hey, but stop, stop it. Woody vegetation.
Okay.
Just, just.
And then, um, there's another.
Next word.
Page ten. The definition of. Underwater containers, we're leading the word strong and spawn.
Correct.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a motion to make those amendments?
Some of it.
Second.
A second.
Okay, it's moved by John Clark and seconded by Frank Culture. Um, we need discussion about the motion to make those amendments for the. Promote this, uh, mission sort of. If not, um, we'll call the roll. Frank?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Here it is. Yes. Bobby Gibson?
Yes.
All right, each of those, um, amendments is approved. Now, is there a, uh, motion to give this ordinance a first reading with the changes that we've.
Probably a first reading.
Second.
There's discussion on the main motion for first reading. If not, we'll do, uh, roll call again, Sarah.
Yes, you agree.
Yes. David?
Yes.
Yes.
Frank?
Yes. Okay, did we need to read it?
We do. We need to read the title.
Nice.
For the, um. So good.
All right, go ahead.
Ordinance number six thirty-two, series twenty twenty-three in order to relating to the amendment and modification of chapter ninety-two. Nuisances of the court of the code of ordinances of the city of Prospect.
Okay. Okay, that first reading has been accomplished. So then we back next month. For second reading and possible, uh, approvals. Uh, next item on the agenda is the first reading of. Ordinance six thirty-three, series twenty twenty-three in ordinance relating to the amendment modification of chapter ninety-seven. Trees and forestation of the code of ordinances of the city of Prospect. And versions A and B are before the council for, for discussion and possible first reading.
Okay, I, I'd like to make a motion that because there's so many moving parts and so what I've heard today. Is so much misrepresentation of what, uh, these, both of these consist of. They're basically the same. The, uh, the one I proposed. Should give, uh, the forestation board more power, not less. And I think the words don't represent what is, um, trying to be accomplished. The first thing on this is a, a mission statement, which.
Correct, let me interrupt one second. Did you make a motion?
I made a motion, yes.
Okay, and what was the, what is the motion?
The motion that we, we provide a, uh, a, a council committee to, uh, investigate both of these and come up with a single proposal to be presented to the, uh, presented to council.
A second. Is there discussion on the motion?
We have a deadline on.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask. When, when will this committee report back to the council?
Uh, I would say within a month. I think that most of, there's very little disagreement in much of this. But there is much misunderstanding.
Okay.
Want to make sure that all of the meetings are public and exactly.
Except to the council.
Oh, wow.
I think they, I think they'd be, personally, I think they'd be required to be in the state statute.
That is what I.
At the committee, at the committee and the council.
Okay. Is that, I'm sure the intent might be the same to these documents, so that's.
I, I agree, I agree with you that it needs to be public.
Okay, uh, is there further discussion?
Well, Frank, let me ask you, how do you increase the power of a? Forestation? Or, I mean, just briefly. Many of these things in here, uh, I don't, I think you'll find out, they really don't believe, belong in ordinance. And if, if many of them are written about what is directed to the public works people in the city. That are working on street trees or some other thing. Uh, if they don't do what it says in that ordinance, are we gonna find Ron or the mayor? Or are we gonna lean city hall? I mean, that's how we, if read the words in these things, they don't lend themselves to. They don't belong in an ordinance. They do belong, I think, in a, um, in an operating, uh, operating guidelines that. Our station should take and publish. There is, there's also, as I discussed with Linda and Lee. There's no tie of the forestation board to the, uh, permit process. There's no legal tie. I mean, they can. There's no, there's nothing that says that Rick has to go to Lee and say, here's our thing. We've got these trees and what's your feedback? I mean, he, if Rick went and did himself, you know, sayonara. There needs to, there needs to be. Uh, an incorporation of the forestation board into the legal process of. What goes on relative to the permits? So, uh, there, so, you know, that's a long-winded saying, but I think. The big thing to me is there's no mission statement and it's spelled out in the first paragraph I put up there. And I think the mission in my mind, and Linda agreed with me and so did Lee. Is that the goal of the forestation board is the tree canopy. It's improving it. It's, you know, managing it. It's, you know, maintaining it as healthy. That's the framework that all of the words in the ordinance need to be. Uh, that's the guidance for all the words. Every company has a mission statement. I mean. The chief has, the chief has a mission statement. I mean, we can supply, as an analogy. We can supply cars and guns and uniforms and everything and say, go get them. And then the police might be out there and their impression of what their mission is, is to increase revenue for the city. So let's go get all the tickets we can. But actually, their mission is public safety and everything has to be framed in public, in that matrix, in public safety. And I think the tree, the forestation board, all of their decisions need to be. Uh, directed under that umbrella and. That includes being part of the, um, that includes being part of the internal processes. And that doesn't happen right now.
Is there further discussion on the motion? So, so I, I'll, I'll make a comment. I, I would encourage the council to, uh, defeat the motion. To, uh, prefer this to a new committee. I think it's been, I think the ordinance has been vetted extensively by forestation board by me. And, uh, Don, to some extent, and certainly in the early days of the, of the discussion of the, of the change, meetings have all been open. The agenda's been published. Um, any member of the council could have attended. To my knowledge, Don's. The only member who has on any regular basis anyway. So I, I, I would urge the board to defeat the motion and consider giving a first reading to, uh, perhaps A this evening, but that's, that's my opinion. Of course, I respect whatever the council decides. Uh, but if, but having made that speech, I'll, I'll, Frank, I'll permit you to have the last word.
Well, I consider this to be exclusively a legislative issue. And that's us, the six of us. If we can't agree on it, that's fine. We can. But that's, uh, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay, so the, the motion is to refer the, uh, drafts A and B to a committee of the council. Uh, that, that committee would report back, uh, in one month to the full council and the, um. Do, do I understand the meetings will, will adhere to the open meetings statute?
Of course. I mean, that's, we would.
Okay, um, so are we ready to vote? Uh, Frank?
Uh, yes.
And John?
No.
David?
Yes.
Uh, John? Yes. John?
Yes.
And Sarah? So somebody help me. What do we got? We're forty-two. Somebody has adopted. So now we've got a committee. What's the council? Is the council ready to form that committee?
Sure, um, I volunteer to be on it.
Any other council members want to join the committee?
Yeah.
Thanks, Sarah. Appreciate that.
I'll join.
Okay, so we've got Sarah, David and Frank. Sounds like a good committee. And if you all, uh, will work with John, he'll assist with notice, public notice of your meetings. And, um, and we'll move forward from there and we'll look forward to hearing your report, uh, next month. So, um, with that, I think we've completed the agenda, if I'm not mistaken.
Mm-hmm.
If there's no further distance to come before the council, is there a vote? All in favor? You already know.
Mayor Farzal, I would like to thank you for doing the town hall at Southern.
Yeah, we missed you.
I mentioned that your reporter, were that sleeping or?
No, I apologize.
You can make it next time.
I was having a boat that day. There's a song about that.
Yeah.
Heard a lot of compliments about you.
Oh, really?